All right. Good morning, everyone. It is May 24th. We are here at a special meeting to wrap up a few items here. I will post, if there are no changes to the agenda that's been posted on the five items, commissioners, I can copy and paste that in the chat. Do you have any changes or additions to items?
No, thank you, not today.
All right. All right, I've got those five items in the chat. Basically, five contracts. Are they following the agenda? Do we have any community informational items? I don't have anything for this morning. Commissioner Marcela?
No, nothing today, thank you.
Mr. Feedler?
No, nothing from me, just noting that there are people here in the BOCC meeting room who I think would like to raise a public comment or discussion item, I think, which we usually do before we go into standing agenda items.
Sounds good, we'll do that after clarifications. I'll add public comment. That's okay with the rest of the commissioners?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Any commissioner clarifications? I don't have anything.
No, nothing today, thank you.
None for me?
All right, and we'll go into public comment on items not on the agenda. And you have three minutes for public comment. If you state your name and your address for us. And raise your hand if you're on Zoom and would like to comment. If you don't know how or are calling in and it's a little bit more difficult to raise your hand, feel free to just unmute and I'm sure we'll work it out.
Sarah, so here in the meeting room, can people just speak into Patty's laptop here?
Yeah.
Does that work?
That will work.
Yes, my name is Ken Olson, 1833 Silver Eagle Court in Leadville. And what I'd like to say on specifically on the agenda items today is that I hate to see the county get the cart before the horse with regard to one agenda item, and that is the hiring of a consultant to hire a county manager when in fact there's a apparently a meeting on Thursday at 6:00 PM sometime. And it wouldn't make kind of sense to enter into a contract with with an item that might be pending already with regard to public input. That, we have a number of people here in this, in this room that I just have a deep feeling that from my standpoint, I've completely lost confidence in the Lake County Commissioners and do not feel good about the direction that Lake County is going. I feel that hiding behind and hiding from the public is a detriment to this county. I speak from all seriousness of living and dying in Leadville and Lake County. And the direction that we're going is not acceptable. We're entering into an era of mutually assured destruction. And we need a lot more communication from Lake County Commissioners in a forum to do such. That's been eroded over the time. No evening meetings, hiding behind Zoom all the time. I couldn't handle it because crying babies and barking dogs. So it's tough when the calendar is dated March. We don't have a forum for public input. And we've got folks here that are simply uncomfortable. I know there are people as uncomfortable as I am with regard to the direction this county is going. This county is super important to me, my kids, my grandkids. We believe, I believe decisions are being made. Now we're going into a county manager situation. We've been there before. I don't want an elected, a non-elected dictator in Lake County. That's my true belief, we've been there before. We need to see some commissioners sometime and please, would Lake County Commissioners come back to work? That's really what I'm after. So I've had my three minutes. I hope it goes well on Thursday and that there's a place that we can actually express our comments.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Any other public comment?
We do.
Good morning. I'm Bill Hollenbeck. And I would echo Ken's sentiments. We've been down this road before and it cost us a half million dollars to get out of it. The money spent on this county administrator, when we're paying you guys to do the job. And I've read your ad for the article of position available in the Herald Democrat. And all the duties and responsibilities outlined there are also outlined in the Colorado Revised Statutes. Okay? And here's, you have books of the statutes right over here. And if you have a question with regard to the state statutes, look in the statutes. Read, bring yourself up to speed. And I would like to say the meetings of the board in the new statutes, it's out. Title 3010-303 says, "Each Board of County Commissioners shall meet at the county seat of its county at least one business day of each month. And at such times, the locations within the county as in the opening of the board or the opinion of the board. The public interest may require." We have a lot of public interest here. We have no way to feed it back to you when you're hid behind a camera. "Such meetings shall be held on a regular and published schedule as determined by resolution of the board." My question is, do you have a resolution that you developed back when you started Zooming each other? Where you have basically neglected the citizens of Lake County who elected you? So my message to you is get back in this damn courthouse and serve the citizens of Lake County, okay? And if you don't want to do that, then go find something else to do and we'll elect somebody else to do the job. It's plain and simple. I've been in your position, I know your position, and we had it a hell of a lot rougher than you have it. We were broke. And Linda and I did over 20 grants in four years. And over $5 million worth of money came into this county because of our effort. So, you know, this job takes a lot of hard work if we're going to move this county forward. And so I'm gonna leave a copy of this meeting of the board. And it's in the statutes. And I know what you're gonna say, you're gonna say, well, we had a virus. But we also have meeting rooms. We have had this
Mr. Hollenbeck, you've hit your three minutes if you want to wrap up your comment, please.
I'll give him my three minutes. Keep talking, Mr. Hollenbeck.
No, that's okay, thank you.
Oh. What?
Mr. Hollenbeck, would you finish up your comment, please?
Yeah, we want to meet up in the, we want to meet up in the courtroom on Thursday night, so we'll be in the courthouse, okay? So, I mean, if you guys want to run and hide, don't hide too damn good because we'll fight.
Hey, Bill, I'm in the office if you want to bring that down to me after this meeting.
I'll leave a copy.
Jeff? I'm Tim Harrelson. 325 Mount Sherman Drive. I'm ceding my to Mr. Hollenbeck to keep telling you people that you can't, you gotta come to damn work. And you can't just hire people to do your work. And you, oh man. You're getting paid big bucks to not be in the courthouse that's been open for a year. And if you don't want to do the job, quit and find somebody that will do a job. Hiring somebody to hire somebody else, are you kidding me? Because we don't want to make a decision, we don't want to be responsible for anything. It's disgusting. It's disgusting the way you guys have been playing this. And I hope, if you try to hire the county manager, you're gonna be three recalls, I guarantee them to you. And if you got, the rest of my time, I'll give to you too.
Okay, well, we're paying, we're paying them about, with a fringe benefit package, we're paying them about 85 grand a year, times three is, what, 255,000?
Yeah.
And then you want to hire another county manager for 110,000, 140,000? By the time you put on a fringe benefit package or more, we're pushing 400,000.
You want to hire a consultant to tell you who to hire, come off it. There's just layer after layer of this management of people that aren't doing anything.
Well, you know,
Patty's been working more than 40 hours a week in this building. And you guys haven't been there at all.
It's time to, it's time to go back to work. And we don't want to go for a recall. Okay?
But you guys pushing forward with this, we voted countywide within the last six years that we don't want a county manager. And it passed that we don't want a county manager. You guys did not mention it once in your campaigns. There was no, oh, we're gonna get this job and then give it away to the county manager with your money.
All the duties and responsibilities of the county commissioners is in, write it down. Title 30 dash 111 dash 107, it says the powers of the board. They're there, there's four pages of them. And if you have a damn problem, read them. It'll tell you what to do. And if you need help, we're here to help you. But we're playing games right now and the game ain't working. It's broken, it's dysfunctional.
And the people that work 40, 60 hours a week in this county are paying the salaries that you all doing Zoom meetings twice a month. And I don't know what else you're doing, but you ain't in this building when everybody else is in this building.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Harrelson and Hollenbeck, your three minutes are up there. Anyone else have public comment?
Anybody else want to comment? Jane? You want to comment on pool?
My name is Jane Harrelson and I live at 172 Rafferty Drive. And I want to, I want our pool. And I have been going to the Recreation Advisory Board meetings. And I understand that Amber has written a request for proposal for the commissioners to approve to send out RFP request for proposal for a master plan. And so we need, I've been told we need this master plan to see what the community priorities are. And we need an impartial third party to tell us, to tell the powers that be to direct us, to guide us, to tell us what our recreation priorities are, how we want to spend the money. And that's fine. I'm okay with an outside company telling us what we want. But it's not about what we want, we need a swimming pool. And whether we replace the one that we have, we had, our tax dollars went 60 grand toward an audit that came out a year ago. Nothing's been done with that audit. Nothing. And you know, I'm willing to wait for this master plan, but I want to be working toward a pool now. And I have had pushback from the Recreation Advisory Board. I have had pushback from the Recreation Director Amber McGee. A pool is a need. It's a need, it's not a, it's not a matter of finding out if it's a community priority. It's a need. And so thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on the call as well? And of course, still sitting.
Anybody else want to make a comment?
Yes, Ron Bertolas.
Go ahead, Ron.
I'm on my phone.
Go ahead, Ron.
I just want to know, before you start this contract negotiation with the company you've got, I want to know if you sent out bids for other contractors to do your your search for this manager that is not needed in Lake County. So will you guys be able to prove that with paperwork or anything?
Ron, we'll get to that when we get to the agenda item. Is that your comment? Do you have any other?
Yeah, and like I said, I'm along with the others. This thing's been voted down a long time ago. And you guys, I mean, I don't see any of you doing anything seriously. I mean, I've came in this building, it's empty. I go outside, I see you guys out camping. I mean, it's like, really? Who cares about the guy? And instead of spending $100,000 or whatever on this guy, maybe we ought to start paving some of these roads too while we're at it. You know, some of the priorities are kind of backwards here. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Ron. Any other community, I mean, sorry, public input? And a lot of this, as has been mentioned, we have a town hall Thursday night. And we'll be going into conversation over at least a couple of these items. Any other public comment?
Hey, Sarah. I don't know. Sorry, we're navigating different Zoom. Had an additional brief comment from Bill Hollenbeck. Okay, you're unmuted if you want to go.
Okay, I would like to see item four on your agenda for consulting agreement with Keith Montag for the county manager hiring process. I think you got the cart before the horse. I think you're way ahead of. And then you want to hold a meeting on Thursday night to discuss a county manager? Let's, hey, let's postpone that, item four, until you meet with the citizens of Lake County, which will be there on Thursday night. Makes sense to me. So I would like to see that item postponed.
Well, I don't think we're taking that off the agenda. We'll, we'll discuss and probably share a little more information, which would give you a better background and probably a better idea of what that agenda item actually is. Any other public comment? I'm not seeing any unmuting or hands raised on the call.
Sarah, we're good, we're good here in the room.
Okay.
I don't see any further calls for public comment at this point.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Feedler. All right, one last call for others joining us virtually. Okay. All right. We'll move on from public comment then and we'll move into new business. First item on the agenda, we have the consideration of an encroachment on East 12th Street. And we have Katie Welter here as our legal counsel. And we have Ann Schneider joining us from Building and Land Use. Would you all give us some background on the request, please? Thanks for joining, Katie.
Sure, yeah, no, I'd be happy to do that. So just give you a couple, a little bit of background on this. First of all, this issue, the encroachment involves a residence located at 110 West 12th Street. And it is currently owned by David and Tammy Hicks. The Hicks have requested that the county grant them a license to encroach after discovering through a surveying process that their home actually encroaches about five feet into the county's right of way and via the West 12th Street. It's actually encroaches into the street itself. And it has likely been encroaching in the right of way for a very long time. The assessor's record, I think, has the house constructed in, let's see, I think it's 1890. And so the house has been there for some time. The county does have the authority to grant a license to encroach by state statute. The Title 30 authorizes the county to, you know, conduct all acts in relation to real property owned by the county. And that includes rights to license and encroachment. The county's land use code does not specifically address this issue. And so we are relying on state statute for authority. The encroachment agreement that has been submitted for your review, I'll just cover a couple of key provisions from that. First, the scope is simply to permit the encroachment as is with no additional expansion. And also, the agreement is revocable, meaning that the county can terminate at any time if the encroachment becomes a nuisance and obstruction or an impediment to the public's use of the right of way. And additionally, the agreement, we feel, puts the county actually in a better position than it is currently. Because it does require that the owner obtain insurance and naming the county as an additional insured in the event of any harms resulting from, from that encroachment. It is, Chris Floyd, of course, county attorney, is out this week, but she has reviewed the agreement. And it is her and our recommendation that the county authorize it. The property is currently under contract for sale. And so we would also recommend that the board not only authorize the chair to sign the agreement, but also to authorize written assignment to the buyers who are under contract. Their names are Richard W. and Pamela K. McLean. Do you have any questions for me right now or Ann?
Katie, the only thing that I would offer, and I see that Carol Glenn is on the Zoom, is I actually think maybe there has already been a deed transfer into the McLean's name. I think that they may have gone ahead and moved forward with the transaction with the confidence based on the draft. And so I guess I would just like Carol Glenn, if she's able to, for informational purposes, to provide if title is actually still in the Hicks or if it's been transferred to the McLeans.
The property, the papers were signed a week ago, but they are being held in escrow until this, after this meeting and the recording. So as far as records go, it is still in the Hicks's name.
I would probably recommend in that case, though, that the licensee under this agreement be the new owners. Then we can just avoid the step of assignment. This is, I would also just add, this is commonly done by other municipalities. And this is a, this is a long, as I mentioned, a longstanding encroachment. This is not a request to create a new encroachment. And so, you know, I don't think there's a huge concern with creating a precedent for the county authorizing encroachments into its right of way.
Thank you, Katie. Paul, do you have comments for us?
I think only to reiterate what Katie just said is that I first suggested this to a real estate agent a couple of months ago, that this would be the way to solve this problem. And this, I think I've seen several of these in other jurisdictions that I've been in. It's a very common tool.
Very good. Commissioners, you have any questions for legal or Land Use staff? I think my only lingering question might be to help us tee up an appropriate motion, Katie, if we need to name the intended licensee. And then the permitting as is. But Commissioner Feedler?
Yeah, just a question to clarify. So this, sorry, I'm missing the consideration of encroachment. So is there, is there, I'm not a land lawyer, but is there any like claim of adverse possession that could have been gone in? Or does that not apply when there's encroachment on public land?
Well, I think the key thing is that that is not being raised. The current and I guess new owners are seeking a permit, permission to encroach as a solution to the problem, which I think is a much simpler approach to this.
Okay, so they, they would have had to assert that if
Yes.
that even was a possibility and they haven't.
No, they haven't.
So this is, I guess, a more amicable way of doing it, okay?
And I would just offer too, that we have bidding, we've had kind of this situation before. And when we consulted with Erin Smith, she said that you can't claim adverse possession against a sovereignty. So I don't think that that was actually something that they were gonna path, they were going to go down because we kind of looked into that just a little bit with Erin previous to the suggestion to do a license to encroach.
Okay, great, thanks for that clarification and no further questions for me.
And in terms of a motion, you could move to adopt, or sorry, move to authorize the chair to sign the agreement as amended to reflect the new owners of the property. And I can send you, I will send you an amended agreement. But I think that that's a sufficient motion.
Thanks, Katie. Do I have a motion to authorize the chair to sign the agreement, adopt, sign and for the board to adopt the agreement as amended with the designation of the new owners?
No, moved.
Second?
All right, any further discussion from the board?
No, thank you.
All right.
None for me?
Okay, hearing none then? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great. All right, and we'll move on to Amber.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Carol.
Thanks, Carol, thanks, Katie.
All right, on to item number two. Considering the bid for Ellen Kirsting on the deck of the Senior Center. The Senior Center is doing some ADA repair. And we need to just check this box so we can keep moving on getting that access renovated. Paul, any other comments on this? Commissioner Marcela?
So this was a, this is a grant item from the Colorado Department of Transportation to upgrade the ramp into the Senior Center and make it more accessible. And so we need to check this box, get the construction underway and get it finished so that we can close out the grant.
Very good, I don't have any more or I don't have any questions. Or I don't have any questions on the item. Commissioner Fiedler?
No, no questions for me, I think we've already had a chance to review this.
All right, I'll I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of the bid from Ellen Kirsting then on the ADA deck and ramp at the senior center.
So moved.
Second?
All right, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I'll just make the comment that that's great that we're funding this in 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 part, or maybe even in whole from from state grants.
Goodly. All right, there's no other discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, and moving on, consideration of the easement from Newmont Mining, the Cloud City Wheelers. We have, let's see, we do have Sterling Mudge here from the Cloud City Wheelers. This has been a topic that we've had a number of work sessions on. Our last work session, we talked through some more of the details with Chris Floyd. And I think we are at a point to consider. Sterling, do you want to give us a bit of a background on the project and the recreation concept?
Yes, thank you. My name is Sterling Mudge, I'm the executive director for the Cloud City Wheelers Bike Club in Leadville. We've been operating and providing recreational opportunities for the citizens and visitors of Lake County and Leadville since 2007. And 2019, we we began discussions with Newmont Resurrection, which is one of the largest private property owners in Lake County, to provide some new recreation opportunities as part of their post closure portion of the life cycle of the mine. Through those discussions, which began in 2019, Newmont Resurrection were on board as far as providing recreational options for Lake County. And they drafted a trail easement similar to some trail easements that already exist in the county. And with that, you know, in 2020, the Cloud City Wheelers, we constructed $172,000 worth of trail on Forest Service land at the Turquoise Lake Recreation Area. Through this public-private partnership with Newmont, we will, we will provide vital recreation opportunities for the citizens and visitors of Lake County. And we hope to usher in a new private-public partnership through this, through this process. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has it, and thank you for your time.
Do the commissioners have any remaining questions? For the Wheelers on the proposal?
No, I don't, I don't at this time. I think we really covered this pretty well in depth last week with with legal.
Can I just make a suggestion? Sterling, could you just elaborate a little bit more? I I know we have had several meetings and discussion on this, but I think for the room it would be helpful to just go through, you know, it is a little bit of a complicated, you know, sorry, what am I trying to say, like, like, ju- ju- just say who's who in that public-private agreement. If you could explain the easement from Newmont, you know, what's being granted to the county and what the role of Cloud City Wheelers is, you know, in the, you know, like, who holds the easement? Who manages the trail, you know, just, you know, walk through the different roles of the three entities here, please.
Thank you, Jeff. So Newmont Resurrection will grant an easement to the county. And through an agreement with the county, a license agreement, the Cloud City Wheelers will construct and maintain indefinitely the trail. The easement, there are two trails currently in the, two trails, new trails planned for that easement in the Oregon Gulch area near Brooklyn Heights. And these trails will link up to the Mineral Belt Trail around the Swamp Angel section of the Mineral Belt Trail. After the easement is granted, the Wheelers and the license agreement between the Cloud City Wheelers and the county is signed. The Wheelers will construct the approximately four miles of trail on Newmont property and maintain them for public use. The the estimated cost of these trails is around $20,000 that the Wheelers are, will be putting up. And all expenses will be paid by the Cloud City Wheelers as far as the construction and maintenance, including signs for the, for the project.
Thanks, Sterling. I feel comfortable at this point to make a motion that we approve the easement from Newmont Mining for the Cloud City Wheelers.
I've got a question for you.
Kayla? Kayla, can you amend the motion a little bit to include a final? Because we 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 did go back and forth and think that we have that final language with Newmont. But to include final review by legal.
Sure, so I'll amend my motion to approve the easement from Newmont Mining for the Cloud City Wheelers, pending final legal review.
Thanks.
A second.
All right, any further discussion for the board?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Mudge, I I think that there are a couple of questions sort of in in the room. And sorry for the awkwardness of, you know, sort of the dual, you know, Zoom and in person. But I think ma- maybe I, i- if I can, can, you know, maybe state my understanding of 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 the answer and just sort of get from Sterling and Cloud City Wheelers, my understanding, I think there, one question is who holds the liability, you know, my understanding is.
Yes, my name is Tom Blossberg, I live 137 East High Street, Leadville, Colorado. My question is, I own mining property. And and Newmont, who's going to provide liability insurance for them operating on mining?
So my understanding is that Cloud City Wheelers will hold insurance. They already hold insurance for the trails they currently operate. And they will be increasing that liability insurance from $2 million to $3 million coverage, which is what Newmont has requested.
Okay.
And Cloud City Wheelers is paying for that additional insurance premium.
How is Cloud City Wheelers funded?
Cloud City Wheelers are funded through membership and fundraising efforts. As far as our our club goes, we have 199 members currently, with most of those being Lake County residents.
Does the county kick in any money?
No.
Is there any more discussion from the board on the motion on the table?
None for me, thanks.
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Commissioner Mudge. I'm again, I'm just trying to relay comments from the room and let me know if this not.
Jeff, we're not, yeah, we're we're not taking more comments on the on the motion on the table unless you have a discussion and aren't ready to take a vote. Commissioner Fiedler, do you have anything else?
Well, I just think, I I think I should re- relay from the room, there is a suggestion that in this case, it might be good to, you know, I don't know if the right word is abstain or recuse from this particular vote. Again, just relaying comments.
Yep, no problem. The the Wheelers and Sterling as an individual doesn't hold, stand to gain from this. And this is an easement for recreation. And there, we've had this discussion too, as far as no conflict of interest on the matter of adding recreation assets for the county. So I don't think that there is any reason that I would need to abstain from the vote.
Okay, I'm I'm ready to vote.
Okay, I'll I'll take a redo that roll call. The motion on the table is to approve the the Newmont easement agreement, pending final legal review. Sorry, yeah, of legal counsel, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, and let's see, moving into number four. So this is a consulting agreement with Keith Montag, who is a retiring county manager of Clear Creek. And we had discussed convening, putting together a a small pre preliminary group of folks to do some pre-application, or not pre-application, but some vetting on applicants that came in for the county manager position. This is an item to engage Keith formally with that group, which will be made up of Commissioner Fiedler, Kristy Dune from DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, Marla Ackridge from the Economic Development Corporation, and Keith Montag, who has also gone through this process recently with Clear Creek. Has been a long time county manager at Clear Creek. The contract is valued, I believe, between $2,000 and $2,500 based on the time that Keith puts into this aspect of the process. We have hosted the county manager position. We've been collecting interested applications or applications from interested applicants. And so Commissioner Fiedler has worked to now collect those and organize next steps in reading through and vetting those applications. I don't have any questions on Keith's proposal for engagement with us in this part of the process. Do the other commissioners have questions or comments?
No, I don't think so. You know, when we talked about this in early 2020, prior to our grant submission to the state for their partnership with this position and this role, this was just a recommendation to get some some people in that have done this before so that the right candidate is selected from the beginning, so that it doesn't have the, you know, that we don't make a misstep in in the hiring process. So Keith has mountains of years of experience. And so he has generously offered to help us.
Thanks, Commissioner Marsella.
Yeah, I just, Commissioner Fiedler, just wanted to add, we have over 15 applicants. And again, from my perspective, the time of Keith Montag as a longstanding county manager that that Lake County has worked with on on several issues. And, you know, I think it's someone, well, yeah, just we want to compensate his time for serving on the screening panel. And, you know, just to elaborate or, you know, describe the agreement some more, you know, Keith Montag is not deciding who to hire. He is helping us sort of rank applicants so that we can decide who to bring in for interviews. And I think some of the finalists will meet with the with the community as a whole.
Absolutely, thanks for that, Jeff. There'll definitely be an ongoing process here. And and in part, I will note too that, you know, I think, I think part of the offer and our our thinking to ask Keith to participate in some of this is also not having that HR lead in the department internally at the moment. And Marla Ackridge at the EDC was kind enough to offer her services as well. So again, just distributing that, those perspectives on our process and bringing that back to the public as as we make those steps. Any other discussion by the board on the agreement with Keith Montag?
Two things, Commissioner Mudge, Paul has his hand up, but also just wanted to to put in there that we had considered other consulting firms, professional consulting firms to to help with this process, like the Novak Group or McKinney and Associates to assist with this process. However, their cost for consulting was over $30,000 for this position. And so we went with the lowest potential cost to help us with the process.
Thanks, and thanks for pointing out on, Paul, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to.
New yellow hands.
I just wanted to indicate to you, the Board of County Commissioners, that I wholeheartedly 100% agree with your choice of Keith Montag for this task. He hired me 30 plus years ago for my first job as a planner. And I have nothing but the highest regard for him.
Thanks, Paul. Katie, I see you came on, do, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in also to say that the the cost of this expense falls within the small purchase category for the purchasing policy, which means it's not necessary to to go through a public bidding process for the expenditure and that the county's work of of pursuing other professionals by phone call or emails is sufficient to follow the small purchase process.
Thanks, Katie. Any other discussion by the board on on the consideration? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for approval of engagement with Keith Montag through hiring manager, county manager process, the recruitment process.
So moved.
A second?
All right, any further discussion by the board?
No, thank you.
All right, hearing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Do we not, do we just simply not matter anymore? Is is that where we're at with this county?
We're we're trying to navigate between like.
No.
Like.
A process to go through, and we've had several meetings on this. I am not going to get into, the board is not going to get into a debate on this item right now. And there is an upcoming opportunity for this discussion Thursday night. And there's been plenty of opportunity before. Commissioner Fiedler, are you able to make, cast a vote?
Yeah.
We we just said.
Is that an affirmative?
Yes.
What is your vote? Your vote is yes?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the final item, consideration for purchase of the sheriff's transport vehicle. Sheriff Reyes, are you, I know you are here and you're busy.
So I I worked with Tina and Sheriff Reyes on.
So I'm sorry to to interrupt, sorry, the with with the back and forth, we we weren't all able. So I'm sorry to, to interrupt, sorry, the, with, with the back and forth, we, we weren't all able to, including the clerk, was not able to hear the votes on the last item. So I don't know if we can just, Sarah, I don't know if you captured them and could relay them to Patty right now? Or if we do actually need to do the vote again. Sorry, we just didn't hear the votes.
Sure, we, all voted in favor.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Marcela, I'm sorry, you were starting to discuss the transport vehicle, which is one aspect of addressing the sheriff's office fleet.
And so the, the transport vehicle, the old transport vehicle was in an accident about a year ago. We got some insurance payout for it to replace that vehicle. And so we were going to add it to a lease with the rest of the sheriff's department vehicles. But we did have the money in the general fund to pay for it outright. And so we wanted to approve that expenditure for that sheriff's office transport vehicle. It's my understanding from both Tina and Sheriff Reyes that the vehicle is ready for pickup and that it has been outfitted with the necessary items to make it safe. And I will pull up the amount here. The total amount of the purchase is $74,042 for us to pay for that outright.
And we had, I think, like you said, discussed this before, and this is definitely a necessity. And the, the process we have discussed previously as the board as well. I don't have any other questions for the sheriff or you, Commissioner Marcela.
Tina, do you have anything that you wanted to add or share, Reyes?
Sheriff, if you are there and trying to speak, you are not unmuted. Imagine that. We can hear you, we can hear you now.
Hello, good morning. So Commissioner Marcela, and the county was able to save about $15,000 on the cash price, correct?
Yeah, so by, by paying for this outright with the savings that we've experienced in the general fund through the first quarter of the year, we'll be able to save about $17,000 compared to if we were to, to go through a lease purchase with the vehicle. So after talking through that with Crystal and Sheriff Reyes and Tina, we decided that this was the best option for us to bring to the board.
Great. No, I just wanted to point out that we were able to save close to $17,000 by June slash.
Yeah, great point. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
All right. I don't think that, oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
That's okay. So I will make a motion that we approve the purchase of the sheriff's transport vehicle for $74,000, $74,042.
A second? Is there any further discussion?
None for me.
All right, thank you. Okay, hearing none then. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Jeff?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, yeah, that was an aye for me, just on top of Kayla's.
Okay, thank you. Okay, aye, all in favor. Very good. All right, and with that, the, our business is completed. Again, we will have a town hall Thursday evening, and our next regular meeting is June 7th. At 10:02, we will adjourn. Thanks, everyone.